We are going to start this moment leading off by observing a moment of silence. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We'll start with a mission statement.
Transforming education, inspiring lives, empowering all. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a special meeting of the Board of School Trustees of Lake Ridge New Tech Schools, Lake County, Indiana, January thirteenth, twenty twenty five, at six a six P M. Dr. Shirley will make a special presentation.
Good evening. Thanks everyone for being here this evening. Uh, this is a bittersweet uh evening. We always have great beginnings, but uh the good news, we have a new board member. The sad news is one of our board members is leaving today. This is his last meeting. And so with that, I want to start with a presentation. If you would hold it to me.
Sam, would you come forward?
Lake Ridge New Tech Schools in appreciation presented to Mr. Samuel Roberts for services rendered from September twenty sixth, twenty twenty two to January thirteenth, twenty twenty five. For your dedicated service and unwavering commitment as a member of the Lake Ridge School Board of Trustees. Your leadership, vision, and contribution have had a lasting impact on our students, staff, and community. With deepest gratitude, Dr. Shirley, Superintendent, and the Lake Ridge School Board of Trustees, we present this to you today. And uh before we leave, Dave, there's another presentation. We're gonna stop this, we're gonna pause the meeting first. I have one more uh certification to give, but we're going to have uh receptions. This is kind of out of order than normal, but we're going to do that. And because we certainly appreciate all that you have done. So hold on, I have one more presentation. Uh, and this, for all of you that do not know, this was National School Board, this is National School Board Month. And so we want to take time to thank our school board for their contributions. Uh, so it reads the plaque, "Thank you for your dedication. Lake Ridge New Tech Schools and the Indiana School Board Association are pleased to recognize the extraordinary school board service of Sam Roberts. Your commitment to excellence has been truly inspiring. Thank you for making a difference for our students, schools, and community." And this is presented to you by Dr. Shirley from Terrence Bradlin. Terrence Bradlin is our Executive Director of the Indiana School Board Association. And so then I can get all the school board members up and we can get a picture, hold on. Uh, and this goes to all of you. Lake Ridge New Tech Schools and the Indiana School Board Association are pleased to recognize the extraordinary school board services of Ken Buckley, Louise Neese, Kim Ostie, and Dan Deal. If I could have you come up. We want to thank you for making a difference for our students, schools, and community. And we're celebrating you as school board members this month for your extraordinary service. And so I want you all to join me with uh my case.
I still gotta get Louise um to get my laptop to tune this in again.
I don't think about what's happening.
How about my audience, anybody want to?
Check out some paint, it's delicious.
Chris?
Adventist preacher. Adventist Aaron.
Monitor the uh.
You guys, if you currently, because we have a meeting.
You think so?
Yes.
You want me to just go get you punch?
Sorry, I'm Melissa Ratain. Nice to meet you.
He is a Belgian shepherd, German shepherd, Husky mix. We got him from um Lake Shore Pines, they got him from Gary Animal Control. The kids love him. I mean, they, they just can't sleep. It's always nice. Oh, really? Dude, what is it? Okay. Okay, okay, it's fun. No, I even, you have a picture? I have three dogs too.
You have three dogs?
Yeah, I have my two at home.
So it'll tee into that.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's awesome. I love you.
Do you want some of that plate?
Here, look. How are you? Congratulations on becoming a board. Good.
I'm Hunsy Keen, by the way. I'm the dean of students at the middle school. I keep this. There's a couple at the high school.
It's her daughter. She's friends with myself.
Okay, gotcha. Remedy.
Remedy?
No, I'm still feeling old.
See, I got my dog. This is Lady, Lady's from the present. Everywhere I go, Lady goes.
Oh, yes, me too. He's not nearly as bad as the other one.
Two things before we begin. Um, we lost a school board member at Lake Station that was very close to our school district, uh Mr. Larrigan.
And he died, his, he was funeralized during Friday, and I did attend. So keep his family lifted up, whatever thoughts you have. He, uh, from the Lake Station Board. And secondly, and some good news, we have a new school board member. If you would please stand. And let's give him a warm Lake Ridge welcome. Mr. David Bacon, uh, Puyumet graduate, graduated with Adrian. And uh he came back home to give to the community. You want to say a few words?
Well, not become a mad few words, but I hope that I could be an asset to the community. I'm aiming for uh the civil, you know, civic duty. Uh, I can make things better, hopefully.
Look forward to meeting with everybody and just hope to be an asset to the community. I really do.
Let the record show that all the board members and the superintendent are present. Let the record show the administrators that are present. Mr. Wilkerson will put in the new school board and reelected board members. Mr. Bacon, Mr. Buckley, and Mr. Deal.
Would you three gentlemen, please stand? Um, yes, we can certainly do that as well a little bit. Please stand before the rest of the board. Somebody assist Mr. Bacon in holding up the Bible? Yes, I guess. Would you know, gentlemen, please uh raise your right hand? Aye. Say your name. Swear. Swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Indiana. And the laws of the United States. And the state of Indiana. I will faithfully execute the duties of my office. As a member of this governing body. So help me God. Congratulations, gentlemen.
This meeting is for the purpose of the reorganization of the school board from January first, twenty twenty five to December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Nomination of officers, president, vice president, and secretary. May I have a nomination for president? Motion by Louise Neese, may I have a second? Second by Mr. Deal. May I have a nomination for vice president? I would like to make a motion for Mr. Buckley to be the vice president. May I have a nomination for secretary? I would like to nominate Ms. Neese to be a secretary. Second by Mr. Buckley. All in favor? Aye. We need to appoint a board member as representative to the Special Education Cooperative. May I have a nomination? I would like to nominate Ms. Neese to be the head start, uh, to be the special ed liaison. May I have a second? Second by Mr. Buckley. All in favor? Aye. We also need to appoint a board member as representative of Head Start. May I have a nomination? Motion by Mr. Buckley, second by Ms. Neese. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. We need to appoint a board member as legislative liaison. May I have a nomination? Okay, uh, motion by Dan. For Kim to be the legislative liaison, may I have a second? We also need to elect a president and secretary for the Board of Finance. May I have a nomination for the president of the Board of Finance?
Better president, you need to action on that last slide.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, all in favor? Aye. We need to elect a president and secretary for the Board of Finance. May I have a nomination for president of the Board of Finance? Motion by Mr. Buckley. May I have a second? Second by Mr. Deal. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. May I have a nomination for secretary of the Board of Finance? I would like to motion for Ms. Neese to be the secretary of the Board of Finance. May I have a second? Second by Mr. Buckley. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Now, we're gonna move on to recommend that Chris Akers be reappointed as treasurer. May I have a motion? The second? Second by Ms. Deal. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Uh, recommend that Justin Gibbs be reappointed as deputy treasurer. May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Buckley. May I have a second? Second by Ms. Neese. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Recommend that the Lake Ridge New Tech School designate the times and the post-stribe newspapers to publish lethal notices during the twenty twenty four calendar year. May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Deal, may I have a second? Second by Ms. Neese. Any questions or comments? Oh, yes, it should be the twenty twenty five school year. Any more questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Recommend that our regular school board meeting dates for the twenty twenty five, no, twenty twenty four, twenty five calendar year will be the second and fourth Monday of each month at six P M. May I have a second, or may I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Buckley, may I have a second? Second by Ms. Neese, any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Recommend the conflict of interest and compact and sort of ethics be approved. May I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Neese, may I have a second? Second by Mr. Deal, any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Consider expulsion hearings. Will or will not the board hear expulsion hearings? Do I have a recommendation for the board will hear expulsion hearings or the board will not?
I make a motion that the board will not hear expulsion hearings.
Mr. Buckley, make sure, make the motion that the board will not hear expulsion hearings. May I have a second? Second by Ms. Neese, any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. I'm gonna move for this meeting to be adjourned. May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Buckley, may I have a second? Second by Ms. Neese, this meeting is adjourned at six thirty two P M. Thank you. This is a regular meeting with executive session of the Board of School Trustees of the Lake Ridge New Tech School, Lake County, Indiana, January thirteenth, twenty twenty five, at six thirty three P M in the Lake Ridge School Board Meeting Room. Let the record show that all the board members and the superintendent are present. Let the record show the administrators that are present. I'd like to move to consider the attached accounts payable vouchers and the December twentieth, twenty four, and January third, twenty five payable for payment. May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Buckley, may I have a second? Second by Ms. Neese. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Five yays, zero nays, motion carries. Consider the Treasury report as of October thirty first and November thirtieth, twenty twenty four. May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Buckley, may I have a second? Second by Mr. Deal. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Five yays, zero nays, motion carries. Consider the Old National Athletic Complex Donation Fund Treasury Report as of October thirty first and November thirtieth, twenty twenty four. May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Deal, may I have a second? Second by Mr. Buckley. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Five yays, zero nays, motion carries. Consider the Old National Self-Insurance Fund Treasury Report as of October thirty first and November thirtieth, twenty twenty four. May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Buckley, may I have a second? Second by Ms. Neese, any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Five yays, zero nays, motion carries. Consider the minutes of the December ninth, twenty twenty four school board meetings. May I have a motion? The chair makes a motion. May I have a second? Second. All, uh, any questions or comments? Oh, that's right, you have this thing, okay. We have four, uh, any questions or comments? All in favor? Four, uh, we should have three yays and two, two. and two, two extensions. So motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. Public comment should remain respectful for everyone. There is a three-minute time limit. We will not discuss personnel issues or student issues. Please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. If you find that your questions or concerns are not answered in this meeting, you are free to schedule one with Dr. Shirley. Please see Ms. Osobito to schedule an appointment. Now, we're going to go ahead and move on to Dr. Shirley.
Positive, inclusive, and equitable environment for all. Goal area four, communications. We will improve communication and strengthen relationships both internally and externally. And goal area five, finances. We will advocate to increase the financial resources of the corporation to provide an outstanding school environment and opportunities for our students, staff, and community. Starting with professional development, we recommend Dr. Shirley and Ms. Olsteen. Mrs. Olsteen, attend the ISBA Indiana School Board Association Board Presidents Leadership Seminar on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five in Indianapolis, Indiana, with expenses paid from the Title II A Fund for Dr. Shirley and from the Operations Fund for Mrs. Olsteen. We recommend Jody Garcia attend the IDOE, Indiana Department of Education, Indiana School Safety Specialist Academy, Basic Training in Indianapolis, Indiana, with expenses paid from the Title II A Fund. We recommend David Bacon attend the ISBA Indiana School Boards Association New Board Member Academy on January eleventh, twenty twenty-five in La Porte, Indiana, with expenses paid from the Operations Fund. We recommend Cynthia Moles, Trevino, Melissa Redding, Erin Gomez, Kyle Stevens, Diane Anderson, and Holly Plowman attend the New Tech Network PBL Site Visit on January thirtieth through the thirty-first, twenty twenty-five in Reynoldsburg, Ohio, with expenses paid from the Title II A Fund. Recommend approving the professional development items.
May I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Neese, may I have a second? Second by Mr. Deal. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Five yays, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you. Leave, resignation, and employment. All new employment to Lake Ridge New Tech Schools is contingent upon a cleared expanded criminal history background check within thirty days and a cleared expanded child protection index check within sixty days of effective date Indiana Code twenty dash twenty-six dash two dash one point five and Indiana Code twenty dash twenty-six dash two dash one point three. We recommend accepting Felicia Freeman's resignation from the computer science teacher position effective January eighth, twenty twenty-five. We recommend James Stevens be employed as the Lake Ridge New Tech Middle School Wrestling Assistant Coach for the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five athletic season. We recommend Rohu Curtis be employed as the sixth grade girls' basketball head coach for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five athletic season. We recommend Amanda Moore be employed as a student supervisor at Longfellow New Tech Elementary School effective January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. We recommend Tanika Brooks be employed as a student supervisor at Lake Ridge New Tech Middle School effective January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. We recommend Jamari Martin be employed as a student supervisor at Longfellow New Tech Elementary School effective January fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. We recommend granting permission to the Longfellow P T C to conduct the following fundraisers on school property. January twentieth, twenty twenty-five Valentine's Candygram Sales. February third through the eleventh, twenty twenty-five Valentine's Candygram Sale. Recommend approval of the leave, resignation, and employment items.
May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Deal, may I have a second? Second by Ms. Neese. Any questions or comments?
Obviously, item G should be in the new business, but if you consider here since it was already mentioned in the agenda.
I'm sorry?
Item G for the, uh, Longfellow P T C should have been in the new business, but since Dr. Shirley already listed the report, you can consider it here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any more questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Five yays, zero nays, motion carries.
Going to move to new business. Recommend approving the following donation at Head Start. December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, check donation of a hundred dollars from the Ridge Model Railroader Group. We recommend approving the following donation at Calumet New Tech High School. November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, cash donation of sixty-nine dollars from the various donors to the student senate account. We recommend approving the following fundraisers at Lake Ridge New Tech Middle School. February third through the twelfth, twenty twenty-five Crush and Sweet Tea Sales for the student general account. We are recommending approving the adjustment of the superintendent's contract regarding insurance and annuity. We recommend approving the twenty twenty-five athletic director compensation request. We recommend approving and paying the attached math instructional coach stipend. We are recommending approving the attached payroll adjustment. We recommend approving the following extracurricular positions at Lake Ridge New Tech Middle School. Recommend approval of new business items.
Motion by Mr. Deal, may I have a second? Second by Mr. Buckley. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Five yays, zero nays, motion carries.
That's all I have for you this evening.
I'm going to go ahead and start with some comments. Mr. Deal. Oh, I'm sorry.
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Want to welcome Mr. Bacon to our group here and, uh, I wish them, uh, to start, to, to go to start his stage. Um, just thank you all for coming out and having a good evening.
Ms. Neese. Okay, thanks, Ms. Neese. We're going to go ahead and go to Mr. Deal.
God bless each and every one of you. Quiet, loved ones. Close to your chest and in your heart. Be with me with the things I've got going on with my health. I wish you all the very best. God bless you.
Mr. Bacon.
I'd like to thank everybody that came out to attend today. Glad I've been so far since I've been here a month. I know it's not for me, but thank you. I'd like to thank the other members here for welcoming me. I'm very grateful because you've guided me a lot and given me help and made me even know. Uh, now, like, you need to know that I want to take this very seriously. My best job I can do is be dedicated, help it as far as I can. Guys, ever do anything, be careful.
Thank you, Mr. Bacon. We're going to go ahead and then to Mr. Wilkerson.
Thank you, Ben President. Uh, just want to thank everyone, uh, for joining us this evening. Happy New Year to everyone. Uh, I hope you all had a pleasant holiday, uh, season. Um, and for our staff, an enjoyable break. Um, we're back for, you know, another semester, hopefully re-energized, revitalized, and ready to go. I also want to congratulate and welcome Mr. Bacon. Um, and, uh, I want to, uh, wish, uh, give my best wishes to Mr. Roberts. I got a chance to know him, you know, uh, some of our seminars we attended, so, um, hopefully, you know, he can do, serve the Lake Ridge community. Uh, he's, uh, you know, best wishes to him, uh, everyone else. Uh, just try to stay warm. I mean, it's supposed to be weird. We're supposed to have a couple real cold days here coming up soon, so, you know, make sure that's, uh, you know, you take care of him and kids, uh, you know, we've only got a bus stop and, you know, making sure, watch out for that. Um, other than that, have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Thanks for being out. I want to say happy new year and thank you for everyone who is here tonight. It was nice to be around. And I wanted to thank Mr. Roberts for his service to our school board and welcome Mr. Bacon. We're excited to have you. And you're going to be right here. So, thank you, everybody, for attending tonight. Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Dr. Shirley.
An opportunity to stop and read the students' work and see the pictures and, uh, their dedication to this month. I have a dream, Dr. King, and so we thank you for the board this month. Uh, I too like to thank and welcome Mr. Bacon. We've had, uh, our initial meeting last week to kind of get to know each other. Uh, he has jumped right in the fire. He's been to, uh, school board training, which, uh, happened last Saturday. And so I think we are off and running. Uh, we, as administrators, are out here tonight. We did settle on a date for our school board retreat, and it's April. You have my sheet. April. April eleventh and twelfth. Mark your calendars. We pushed it as far as we could, so, uh, administrators, it will be an administrative school board retreat, and I look forward to that. Well, we will revisit. That's a Friday evening and a Saturday. It's all day on Saturday, but it's once a year, so, uh, mark your calendars. Uh, just want to say happy new year to everyone. It seems like it's been a long time since New Year's. We're off and running. Thank you all for being here to support Mr. Roberts. Uh, as we know, it's never easy saying goodbye, but we also, uh, wanted to say welcome to Mr. Bacon. So I thank all of you in our technology department and our communications director. Good job, as always. We appreciate what you do. Thank you, administrators. And Mrs. Bacon, congratulations, you just joined the family. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is like a laugh, everything's very celebrating. So, thank you all for coming here tonight. I love the evening today. Um, I hope everyone has a great new year. Happy new year. Today would have been my dad's eighty-second birthday, so I'm a little sad today. I'm missing my dad on his birthday, but happy for all the memories that he left me with. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Buckley, may I have a second? Second by Ms. Neese. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.